See what you call the rule, please.
Craig Romi.
President.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
David Burris.
Here.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukin.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Thank you.
Joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a couple reminders as we always do. If you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. And remember, the microphones are your friends. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
An amended agenda? We need to change personnel action, the second E to G, so it'll be personnel actions A through G.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda and personnel actions should be A through G instead of A through E.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd council meeting?
April 5th, I'm sorry.
It says 3rd on paper.
I know. But it was the 5th because we had a snowstorm.
Yeah, it moved.
Oh.
So why'd you put the 3rd on there?
Because I'm not perfect.
Ooh.
I second that misty.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between, $208,568.27.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $120,591.57.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Do we have anybody who would like to address the council? All right. We'll move on to council updates.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
Danell Rose, 1738 Albany Avenue. Is that on?
You gotta get close to it.
Danell? It's not on, is it?
Yeah, it is. You gotta get closer.
You can tilt it down. There you go. Danell Rose, 1738 Albany Avenue. I'm here in support of the use permit for the daycare center. I'm three houses down, and I think it would be great to have some children in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so a reminder to everyone that wants to address the council. We do have two public hearings, one at 7:10 and one at 7:15. So we ask that everyone limit their comments to five minutes. We'll give you a little more if needed, but when we get to the 7:10, we'll just ask you to pause, and we'll go ahead and do our public hearing, and then we'll come back to you.
Go ahead.
We're about five minutes away.
So we are the ones that are starting the daycare.
Your name and address, please.
Amanda Lewis, and my address is 1646 Albany Avenue. The name of the daycare is Hot Springs Family Wellness Childcare Center and Services. We feel really passionate about raising children and giving them interactive activities to deal with one another and just a safe place. There are not very many licensed daycares in this town besides Bethesda. I personally happen to know that they have five times the safe amount of mold in their basement, and when I was there, I got very sick, and a lot of the teachers there have quit because they have been experiencing terrible side effects from mold poisoning. So there are no safe, really licensed daycares. I'm in the process of getting licensed, and I want to provide a safe place for the community, for single moms, or for anybody who needs to have their child be watched.
So Amanda, if I could interrupt you at this point. You're at the 7:15 public hearing, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to address the council. We won't limit your time at the 7:15, then council people will ask you any questions they have. So if you'd like to wait till then? All right. Thank you.
Gerald Colligan, 1038 Evanston Avenue.
So we're at 7:06, Gerald, so we've got about four, and then we'll ask you to pause if you're...
A couple months ago, I came to Public Works and was asking questions about if the possibility existed that the Public Works Committee or someone on the council had a plan for the food truck area right across from the plunge, because you've got construction coming down the street probably in a year, but just wondering if there was a plan for that corner, because it definitely would involve safety and the plunge committee and also Public Works. And I also realize that there is no money right now, but when those construction guys come down around the corner, if there's a plan, the possibility would exist that maybe they could put in some footings for the future plan. Definitely, the wall that's parallel with the road right now, safety-wise, needs to be moved to the west. But anyway, that was my concern, because the city's starting to put permanent improvements in the food truck park that may conflict with a plan. So just looking for a plan for that food truck area.
Hey, Anthony Abrechius, 702 South of Spring Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota. I think you know, I've been for you guys a couple times already about the food trucks. I'd like to get that variance, a distance variance, but if we have a food truck area, I'd like to see it getting utilized and possibly enforced where they're down there. It's not helping three businesses down in my end of town. I'd like to see something going on with something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we're about a minute and a half away from our first public hearing. We ought to be able to get through personnel. We'll jump ahead to... Because our council updates will take a little bit. Let's just go ahead and jump ahead to our personnel. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through G?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through G.
Second.
Discussion. I've been asked by several council people as far as the resignation of PJ Wetzel from our golf course. The two things I can offer is I did not ask for his resignation, and it isn't anything that the city has done. To paraphrase Mr. Lukin's, "We did not contaminate our Cheerios." But the reason that he's leaving is his story to tell. So if he wants to share it, and you want to ask him, I imagine he would. It's just not my place to share the reason for his resignation. Again, I just need to emphasize, I did not ask for it. I would not have asked for it, and it isn't anything that the city or the council did that prompted his resignation. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. So we're at 7:10. We're at our first public hearing, a hearing to act on the applications for retail on-off sale wine and cider and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from the Kitchen, Inc., LLC, to be used at 745 Jennings Avenue. Is there anyone here from the Kitchen, Inc.?
That's 741 Jennings.
741?
Yeah.
Is that you, Maria? Would you like to address the council?
Up into the mic, please.
Name, rank, and serial number.
I didn't recognize you sitting there.
I was fading into the background. It's what I'm good at. So any questions that you want, I'm not sure what you want me to address you with. So this is all very new to me.
Just give us an idea of what you're going to be doing.
Okay. I'm opening a restaurant in the front half of the building, and we're working on opening at the end of this month, and we would love to be able to serve wine and beer. We just want it to be a complement to the meal, not something that people show up to do. So keep it nice and keep it clean and keep it comfortable.
Given what's going on with the road reconstruction, any idea when you'll be opening?
Actually, we want to open by the end of this month for to-go orders, and then we're hoping to open towards the end of May, middle of May, for in-house seating. And we're working on getting my side lot, where all the concrete is, getting that all cleared off, and then I can have parking there.
What will your hours be?
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And then, I know, right? And then, as the summer draws forward, then we'll see what the need is, and we'll possibly stay open until 10:00 PM. So it's going to be really exciting. So if you know of any cooks, we pay really, really good wages. We start at 17, but we're very picky with who we have. So I would rather do this not at all than do it with the wrong people. So yeah, we just want it to be a very positive experience for the community. Any other questions?
Food safe. You guys, how many people do you have on your food safe?
Me and one other. So we have two right now.
So two?
Mm-hmm.
One last question. What kind of food do you think you'll be offering?
We're going to do seasonal. So we'll have breakfast all day, because it's my favorite. And we're going to try to locally source as much as we possibly can to support the community. So most of our menu will be rotating seasonally. So it will just be one of those things that you're just going to keep up your, you know, your presence online and see what's available, and we want to make it fresh and make it local.
Well, this is a hearing for the alcohol beverage license, but you can obviously see everybody's interested in food, so thank you for what you're trying to do.
I expected that. It's okay.
You looking at putting just cans, canned beers, wine?
I would love to try and see what people have for more local tap beer eventually, like some of the local microbreweries up towards Custer and Hill City and things like that. We're very open to making it an experience that's to remember, and a lot of people don't get the opportunity to have those options unless they are up in the Northern Hills. So it would be fun to see what they have available that they can get us, that we can have more options.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Yes, not a problem. Thank you.
Good luck, Maria.
The best of luck.
All right. So I need a motion to approve, table or deny?
Can you close the public?
Yes, thank you. I'll go ahead and close it at 7:15.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the application for retail on-off sale wine and cider and retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from the Kitchen, Inc., LLC, to be used at, well, one says 741 and one says 745 Jennings Avenue.
Second.
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 Somewhere on the corner.
Maria, you said 741?
It is 741.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful night.
You too.
You too.
Good luck.
So at our 7:15 public hearing, use permit on review from Amanda Lewis to operate a home daycare at 1646 Albany Avenue. Amanda? You're up, Amanda.
Thank you all for being here tonight. So I did just give a quick background of our, the reason why I feel like this community needs it, and just kind of our mission as a daycare would be to get the kids ready. We would be working with kids before they get to kindergarten, probably like ages two to five, and so it would be kind of a preschool environment, and we would use some curriculum and incorporate those skills to prepare the kids for kindergarten as well. We have a backyard that we're working on getting the grant money for putting playground equipment in there and trying to make it really fun, and we'll be getting feedback from our neighbors, too, to make sure that like it's not too loud, or what hours are good for us to be playing outside and everything. But did you guys have any questions?
You had mentioned that you were working on licensure. Is that like state licensure for...
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Amanda, are you currently the only provider? Do you have any helpers?
I do have a helper. She is not on the application for licensure yet. She has 90 days to complete her full orientation courses, and if she can do that, then I will have a helper.
And you are doing a background check on her also?
Yeah, she's already done her background check, and she's passed. Yeah, and my husband is well.
I just want to say I appreciate the fact that you have actually taken everything that we have in the daycare supplement within our ordinance and taken the time to complete it. The inspection form, I've looked at the emergency plan, and I thought it was very well thought through and completed, and it did not appear that you just threw it together, that your immediate evacuation point is the library, and you actually took the time to do the work and completed everything that we asked of you, and so thank you for doing that.
Of course.
I do appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions or comments?
How many children will you be able to care for?
At first, while we get a rhythm, we're going to start with five to 10, and we're going to see how that goes. I don't want to take on more than 10 the first year. So that's kind of where we're at with that. We're going to get into a rhythm. I've done preschool before, but I haven't ever done it on my own, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything by the book, so.
And what will be your hours?
We would open at 7:00 AM for drop-off and then 5:00 PM pickup, and then if it ends up being later, we'll work that out with the parents, but yeah.
Now, that's 10 children at max, even if you were on your own?
No, 10 children only if I have the helper.
Okay, if you didn't have the helper, how many you're going to max out on?
So there's rules for that, depending on the ages of the children, because I will be getting the license. I think I can only take, I can take 10 kids as long as there's nobody under two. Just me, I could take 10 kids. Do I want to? Probably not. So we're going to probably be even more conservative on like the amount of kids we take, and we are not going to take infants the first year, because that's just not something we want to deal with while we're getting started. Everybody in our daycare will be, have to be two and potty trained, so.
Okay. How about, not to hog it, but how about like snacks and food? Do you...
Yeah. So the licensing with the state, they provide a grant to do the food, because we're supposed to provide a third of their daily nutrition. So those things will be provided as well.
Now, are you using a menu of your own choice or something that's requested through dietary program or...
Yeah, we're working with the state to look at their rules for the food. It's mainly like just what they give to a parent if you're going to a WIC office and they recommend what you should feed your child. It's that kind of thing that we will be going off of when we make our meal planning and our menus, which will change month to month.
So are you required to be CPR certified?
I am CPR certified. Yes, I am required to, and I'm also first aid certified. And so is my helper, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sounds like you know what you're doing.
We're trying. I tell my friends, pray for me, because we'll be taking on some kids, so.
Our community does need it, and I praise you for how you run about this health program.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for your support.
Good luck with that.
Amanda, I have a question and a comment. I see the list of all of the folks that are within 200 feet radius of where the daycare is going to be. Have you got those sent out to get responses from everybody?
Almost everybody. Everybody but six people did not respond.
All right. And I would like to echo what the other council members have said, is that a while back, we enhanced the daycare application in the process and recognizing everything that you've gone through to meet the requirements that council approved here in the past. It's appreciated. Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to approve, table or deny the use permit on review? Close it at 7:23. Thank you, JR.
I make a motion to approve the permit on review use for Amanda Lewis to operate a home daycare at 1646 Albany Avenue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you so much.
Time to go to work.
It's a much-needed service we need.
Buy stock in Tylenol or something.
Brings us to first of our council updates. Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Olivia was not able to be here tonight, but she did provide each of you with her written report. Ask that you take a look at that. If you have any comments for tonight or, you know, directly with Olivia. Next is the Executive Director, Andrea Powers of Shetec.
Good evening, Mayor Bob, City Council. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can the audience? All right.
Thank you for having me tonight. I have everything broken down into topics, so my first one is marketing. Our GOED video was completed and launched on our website as well as the GOED state website. I didn't have enough time today to get down here and have Chris set up for me, or I would show it to you, and I will do it at your pleasure sometime in May, hopefully. It's obviously spreading because I'm seeing it on other sites like Far River Chat Room and that sort of thing. I'm getting lots of comments on it, so that's nice. The Marketing Committee of Rushmore Regional Alliance has chosen to take our website, the regional website, which is Black Hills Wide Economic Development into a new direction. I've been on their marketing committee now for three years. We're going to focus on attracting workforce and rebuild the website to address this as well as creating more of a clearinghouse for member economic development corporations to showcase quality of life aspects in our area. To that end, we have released an RFP for potential website design and management. This means that I can push out various events and aspects of the Southern Hills at a more granular level that has been available to me before. Housing. At the request of the Secretary of the South Dakota Veterans Administration, Chuck Johnson, who's the superintendent of the State Veterans Home, requested a contact list of potential interest groups to attend an informational session about the new infrastructure grant due to be released around the 1st of July. I have requested that the session be held later in May so that the new CEO of Far River Health Services can attend as well as myself. I included potential contractors and business leaders as well as city administration on the contact list. So those should be going out pretty quickly, those letters of invitation. And that's really good for us because obviously the Secretary of South Dakota Veterans Administration is in the same general vicinity as GOED and the Housing Authority, so they have good connections. That bodes well for us, I think, in terms of applying for that infrastructure grant. Infill housing. Elevate Rapid Cities hosting a small-scale development training on April 20th. The training is intended to engage a slightly different audience, and this event, with this event, with the goal of getting more people involved in housing development. The event is free to everyone, and there are both in-person and online options. Ideal attendees are those who own some property in town or have some experience in house flipping but have not yet ventured into the development arena. The program is not good, a good fit for folks with experience in construction, et cetera. They'd be a bit bored. This is from their email, not mine. I have sent the information to Tom Iverson, and he has registered. If you remember who he is, he's the one who flipped a dollar in into apartments, and I knew that he had an interest. Letters of support. Dream Design requested letters of support for the State Department of Revenue to demonstrate that our housing projects are in fact economic development issues. The reason for this is that there are two ways to apply for a TIF if we were to choose to do that, if the city were to choose to do that. One is a residential TIF, one is an economic development TIF. If we went for a residential TIF, then the cost for the school funding would be distributed among our school district only. If we get an economic development TIF, it's distributed all the way across the state. So that's difference in maybe a couple thousand people and 800,000 people, and we are already paying taxes for other people's TIFs. So, does that make sense? Okay. So I got them six letters of support for that. The progress on Building 1. I communicated with Dream Design via email, asking for an update. Hannah let me, Hanny let me know that they're continuing to work the financial end of the project, and that with increased interest rates and other factors, they're rethinking the possibilities for the project financially and structurally. They are designing the project to be financially feasible while still providing an exceptional product at rates that the hot springs market can tolerate. Infrastructure grant. The funding passed in the 2023 legislature session, but details of how the funds will be managed, who can apply, and what the timeframes will be are still being hashed out. The funding opportunity is set to open the first week of July. Childcare. I was happy to hear that, and I can tell you, I have the booklet of requirements, and it's that thick. It's pretty detailed. An interested party approached me about a potential space for childcare facility. I spoke with Chuck Johnson about our previous conversation around a potential childcare facility at the old... facility at the old soldiers home, and he again expressed interest, and I passed the contact information on to that individual and let the individual know that a facility placed on the state vets home campus would need to provide 24/7 care options for those with overnight shifts, so that would be specifically directed at people in the healthcare professions. And we all know we have plenty of need for that. Satellite nursing program. Dr. Bowman, Tiffany Howell, who's their satellite program director, and Christine Hybertson, who's their nursing program director, and I met with Mark Eastman, Georgia Holmes, who is acting CEO at Far River Health Services, and Dr. Wilson met to strategize around requirements and space for the satellite nursing program. Far River Health Services offered their space for free, and that's fantastic, but they are pinched for the necessary lab space, which requires potential beds, I'm sorry, patient beds and monitoring equipment set up to replicate a hospital setting, and they need room for at least four beds set up. After our meeting, I took Western Dakota Tech representatives to the Hot Springs ambulance facility to meet with Jackie Conlon. She offered the training facility for the lab requirements and suggested that a dual paramedic nursing program would be a good fit for the area. Dr. Bowman and the staff were excited about that prospect as well as the facility. So, they are still on target for the spring of 2024 to begin that. The Fermi Lab. I have a meeting with Andrew Heim, Strategic Management for the Fermi Lab, that's the Sanford Project up in Lead, on April 20th to discuss potential employee development to fulfill their needs at the lab. Edgemont, well, you probably don't need to know that. McCauley Fund. I don't know if you know this not or yet. Two grant awards were given out for the fiscal year '23. One was to the Boy Scouts and another to the Hot Springs Ministerial Association for this year. The transfer bus. Mayor Nelson graciously offered, or I asked him, I should say, to speak with the owner of Super 8 about the possibility of allowing some overflow traffic at the Mammoth site to park in his parking lot, and I met with him personally, and he's in agreement that that's, that's a feasible solution so that we can still hire a van and a driver to transport people from the Mammoth site, who get 64,000 visitors a year down to the retail area so that they can access our restaurants and our retail shopping district. So, initially, I gotta know, but I haven't given up yet. And I haven't had the chance to speak with folks at the Mammoth site about this yet. I'll be contacting some of their board members tomorrow. New development potential. I've communicated with a gentleman who's interested in doing some development north of town, and Tracy and I had a phone conference with him answering questions about existing and needing infrastructure. He's also someone who's interested in the infrastructure grant. And that's everything.
I'm sweating for you. You're a busy woman.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to email me your updates?
You can have it, and it's got a bunch of grammatical errors, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Very informative.
Pardon?
Very informative.
I have a question on the visitor bus. If you're able to, you know, make that happen, when do you see that starting?
Well, I will email a few of the board members tomorrow. I don't know when their next board meeting is or if they will agree to it, and there's still a discussion to be had about whether a van would pick them up from the Super 8 parking lot or from the front of the Mammoth site. I personally feel like the bus needs to pull up to the front because it's sort of like an impulse purchase that you make at the cash register. You come out of the Mammoth site, there's the bus, and, and you see the opportunity and you take it. Whereas if you have to move your car down to the Super 8 and that sort of thing, it's, it's too far. Lose, lose, lose attention spans. So, that's my perspective. Whether that'll fly, I don't know, but it's worth a try. And I was able to get insurance and potentially the van and driver through Prairie Transit. So, our target, the board, the Shedco Board and I decided our target was to begin June and just run through August, a three-month pilot, and we would track the number of people who got on the bus, and we've brainstormed some potential tracking means for who goes into the stores and makes purchases, be that a restaurant or the retail, so that we can figure out if, just how much of an impact it had.
So, are you talking pick up at the Mammoth and drop off at Centennial, or are there multiple drop off areas?
Nope, just there.
Just the one?
One drop off going down Garden Street so it doesn't get into the construction area. And three or four loops every two hours. That gives people time to eat and look around.
And the driver should have the city map with them, the new one that's just?
And the driver should be enthusiastic about Hot Springs and know, be able to point out potential places.
That would be a wonderful thing, because that's what I like doing when I go traveling is I like to hop on, hop off and learning the history along the way, so that this could be the beginning of something like that.
Yeah, as a pilot and, and, yeah, it would be a good thing.
Sounds like someone might be interviewing for the driving position.
Let me think.
I like the idea.
I love the idea.
And keeping it simple, because like you said, if you got too many moves, you're gonna lose them.
Right.
They're gonna take off.
Right. And pickups and other places just won't work because that's where the mass of people go.
And it's just the situation in our town, the way it's laid out.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
You gotta be close to it, so you might want to raise it up.
Hear me?
Audience?
Better. Yellow.
They're going.
They're.
Tilt it up just a little bit more. Try that.
Working?
Yeah.
Can you? Pretend you're Elvis and just sing right into the mic.
You have to be with like an inch from.
I can talk really loud.
There you go.
That's better.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Historic Preservation Commission. I am the chairman of it. And recently, you guys passed the revised ordinance for that, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that because I listened to it. If somebody called me, I'd have came down, talked about it, but I didn't know it was being presented, so. But anyway, just a summary of that, because some of the stuff I heard is, I wanted to clarify just a little bit. And one of the first things has to do with the map, and we went from having legal descriptions to a map for our historic district. The original one, which, that, where all the legal descriptions came out of the 1970s when they first passed the ordinance. And that's a perfectly legitimate way to do it, but the problem is it leaves a lot of holes because it only lists the, what they call contributing buildings. And a contributing building is a building that's registered with the National Registry of Historic Buildings. A non-contributing one is a building that's newer, that don't fit it, but it's still there. So, if you was to take a map and draw out our, take a line and draw out our maps, it a bunch of jogs around it. So, part of it was to correct that. So, now everything is contained within a single map, and a little earlier, I worked with, I believe her name was Carrie, down at City Hall, and we put an interactive map on there. And by interactive, any of you can go on there and bring up this map, and you can zoom in on it, you can see buildings, you can pretty much lays everything out. On the top of each building is a little tab, you can click on the tab, it'll give you a little bit of information on the building. So, it makes it a pretty effective way to determine whether you're in the district or outside of the district and with a more visual approach to it. The second thing was our ordinance is based on South Dakota codified law. South Dakota has an entire section on historic preservation, and so all of our sections of our ordinance are actually off of the South Dakota codified law. So, we went through and we cited each South Dakota codified law for each section of it and corrected it, too. There were some typos in there, so it wasn't necessarily listed as the right, the right South Dakota codified law. We also combined the Historic Preservation Commission with the Historic District Commission. Now, to distinguish one from another, Historic District Commission is usually used at the start of a historic district. They go through and they analyze buildings, and they do all the legwork with public meetings and things like that. Well, one of the thoughts was just to abolish it, but by South Dakota codified law, if we got a Historic Preservation Commission, we have to have a Historic District Commission. And it could be used down the road if we happen to modify or change or grow our historic district in some way. So, they were combined, and basically what we did was made everybody that's an officer or a member of the Historic District Preservation Commission automatically were also the same members of the Historic District Commission, to kind of clarify it. And we rewrote the deterioration by neglect. Now, one of the things that got stated is we never had that before. We've had the deterioration by neglect since the 1970s in our ordinance. And for you that's not familiar with that, that is, is if you fall into that category, that's punishable by to 30 days in jail and a $500 per day fine with it. And that is one that has not been used that I think Hot Springs will have to look at using, because that could have saved Welsh Oaks 30 years ago. That could have saved the Community Action Building, was that 10 years ago or whatever it was. So, what we did with it, it was in the ordinance, but it was in there based on your Hot Springs ordinance, Chapter 10, 10-99, 10-99. And you go to it, and it refers you to South Dakota codified law 22-6-22. Well, that is Class 2 misdemeanor with the same things I just said. So, it was in there. We debated this several times with city officials in the past, and I know none of you are on there, but nobody would take and run with that. Okay, another thing that keeps getting thrown around is the term demolition by neglect as opposed to deterioration by neglect. There is a demolition by neglect, and that is the one that's used for Welsh Oaks. It got to the point where there's no saving it, and it come to a point where the road construction, it had to come down. Okay, that's, that's demolition by neglect. Now, the buildings I'm gonna talk about in a little bit are in the category of deterioration by neglect, which is what this Class 2 misdemeanor is based around. Just a little bit of an overview on the Historic Commission. Sometimes we get, people think that we got a lot of power and we can go in and dictate your colors and everything like that. No, we can't. Our main focus and the focus of Historic Preservation is to develop what's called a certificate of appropriateness. And if you're doing alterations on a historic building in the historic district and even the nonhistoric for certain things like signs, they need to fill out a certificate of appropriateness, and then we determine, is this going to fit into the scheme of the historic district? Or is this, you know, is somebody gonna come along and paint cycle up the colors on their buildings and stuff like that? And it's basically just to keep things more uniform, sign each two. Hot Springs has a sign ordinance, which we follow also, but we also watch for that because we want it to be somewhat of a historic look to it, you know, no neon lights, neon lighted signs or anything like that will be in a district. If any of you are interested, there's an incredibly good YouTube video on Historic Preservation that I would like all of you to watch. It's about 50 minutes. It's by Bob Yap, Y-A-P-P. It's called Preservation Doesn't Cost, It Pays. And I think I sent a link to you today, must be on that, or?
Maybe a long time ago.
If I sent one to you, could you get it to everybody?
I can look it up to Bob Yap.
Yeah. And I appreciate it if you look at that because he does a very good job of explaining what Historic Preservation is all about. And it's not to go and force people to do stuff. Now, we as a Historic Preservation Commission have no authority, and we can say all we want to say. The authority lies totally in the city of Hot Springs as to whether it's going to be enforced, not enforced, and we have been overrode on things and had decisions made at the mayor and council level, this overrode what we're doing, and that's just the way it is. I mean, you guys have the power to do that. But as a general rule, we make recommendations, and it's up to you guys to move forward with them.
Could you repeat that, Bob Yap, the name of that video?
Preservation. It's Preservation Doesn't Cost, It Pays. He's actually got quite a few out there, so if you want to watch this one, this is, he does a lot of specialty ones on insulating old buildings and stuff like that and windows and various things like that. This is more of a generic one that covers. He's actually given a seminar in Nebraska about it when he talks about it, so pretty good information. And, you know, like I said, the other thing I'd like to mention is we do not have anything to do with what happens in a building. So, you know, that's up to the city and what they'll allow to go in there and not go in there. We're strictly outside the building. And so, in particular, the front facades, and any alterations or anything that are done on that, if you come along and decide you're gonna pop some new windows in where there weren't windows and stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get involved with that. And those things can deteriorate the historic properties of the building, and in particular, if you deteriorate it too far, you can lose your, your historic building designation with it. They can actually pull it away. And we do have a building in town that that happened to, and I think if they had to revisit it, they have it, they would probably say there's too much of the original building gone, and that may not qualify again. So, we have to be very careful about how much we allow somebody to alter a building.
Can you tell us what building that was?
What's that?
Can you tell us which building that was?
Oh, yeah, the Community Action.
Oh.
Building.
The one that's gone now?
Because that, that was a single building. Basically, you've chopped the building in half by, by tearing that out. I'm gonna mention that in just a minute here. No.
What do we use?
It's right here, Secretary of Interiors Illustrated Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. And we use that as a guideline because if you apply for any grants or any of the incentives out there, this is what you gotta follow. And I say you've got to follow it because I really like the way they've laid this out. They'll usually lay out one or two, three different ways to do it and then what not to do. So, you've got some options in there, and it gives you some little bit of leeway on it to where, you know, we're not, not dictating. You know, windows can be an issue. You know, you get into some districts, you know, if you go up to like West Boulevard in Rapid, you replace a window, you're gonna replace a window exactly like it is. We're a little more lenient down here for a couple reasons, is primarily a lot of these people don't have the money that take to rebuild these old windows, and it does take a lot more time and a lot more energy to rebuild them versus what they meant. But that being said... But that being said, the historic groups and peer in Washington have approved a number of alternate designs. For instance, Pella puts out a line of windows for historic buildings. And so, when we start looking at popping in windows, we can probably get something pretty close to Pella. And we don't have to worry about rebuilding the old single pane windows, which if any of you are familiar with them, they're not energy efficient at all. I had them in my building down there. In the wintertime, things would about freeze in the front window. In the summertime, the plastic would melt off and things in there. So not necessarily conducive if you're paying a lot of money for fuel, and we pay a lot of money for fuel. Now, just a little bit on the grants here, and then I'll come back to this other. Some of you may be aware of this, some of you not, there's actually three different incentives available to building owners. The first one is what's called the Deadwood Fund. Now, that's $100,000. And that sounds like a pretty good amount of money, but that's $100,000 for the entire state of South Dakota. So you might have a barn up at Ipswich that's on the historical registry and a church steeple down in Springfield or wherever. And you may have 20 different things buying for $100,000. And they're kind of tough to get. But if you get it, you're probably going to be $5,000 to $10,000. You might get lucky and get some more out of it than that. But if anybody's familiar with building costs right now, $10,000 doesn't get you very far on doing anything, whether it's tuck pointing, windows, whatever it happens to be. There's also a federal tax incentive that if we provided these are approved and you apply for this, you can actually get a federal income tax credit up to 20% of your materials and labor that you put into these buildings. And that could be pretty good too, but that's, once again, it's a little challenging to do, a lot of paperwork involved. And the third one is a state tax, a property tax moratorium. And with that, you can apply for that if you receive it. It's eight years before they raise your property taxes. And that can give you a pretty good jump. And anybody that's got their property tax notices recently know that that's taken quite a bite again. And if you're a commercial building on Main Street, you'll know it took a heck of a bite of you. We've got people coming in paying unbelievable amounts of money for these buildings, so now they determine every one of them's worth that much. So as building owners, we get to sharing that joy by paying the tax man. Okay, now, also available to us as the Historic Commission, we have some grants available to us. And they're basically put out through the National Park Service or National Trust Preservation Funds. And they're allocated on a, I think, two times a year. Yeah, February and October, $2,500 to $5,000 that we can apply for. One of the problems is it's all matching though. And we have no money. So we're hard to buy for $5,000 and we don't have $5,000 to match it with. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Now, there's another one that's available to any nonprofit that's geared towards Historic Preservation. And that includes the city, that includes the Historic Commissions, we're all nonprofits. And that's called the Outside of Deadwood Program. And it is not the same as the Deadwood Fund. Deadwood themselves handles this. And I think with just a little bit of, you know, they've kind of felt guilty, they get several million dollars a year, Historic Preservation money, the rest of the state gets $100,000. And so, it's really disproportionate. And it's really kind of sad for these small communities because one of the problems that we have had, we used to have a lot of stuff happening in this town. When Deadwood came in, everybody wants to go to Deadwood. And we don't have the conventions we had. We don't have all of that stuff anymore. And so Deadwood came up with this as a way of doing, of spreading a little bit out to the communities that lost out because of the gambling. And that's $100,000, although they did give out more last year. And they're really encouraging us to apply for that. Now, part of the problem with that is that's also matching money. Now, as part of the Historic Preservation Commission, we are also a certified local government, was it called? And that's what makes us eligible for some of this other money. Because there are Preservation Commissions that are not a certified local government, they can't apply for it. And there's only, I think, like nine or 10 in the state that have this. Back in the 70s, some individuals went through a lot of work to make this happen. And you really got to go through a lot of loops, hoops and a lot of paperwork and stuff to make sure that, get everything done to be able to even get that status. Now, as I talk about that, I'll get down here just a little bit more. I wanted to talk a little bit about progress. And, you know, I've heard people say, well, there's nothing being done with Historic Preservation. Well, there's quite a little being done. I think the problem with what they see is the deteriorating buildings that we all look at when we drive down the street. Because if you look at Historic Preservation from the time I originally came here in the 70s, I mean, there were old junk buildings all over, buildings were falling down. Minicotta still had several of those old bottling company buildings and stuff up that way. And some of the big buildings on Chicago Street were torn down. And so this group got together to form the Commission to try and prevent all of them from getting torn down. Now, when I came back, I left for a while, came back in the 90s, I mean, the place looked like a ghost town. There are empty buildings all over the place. And until about two years ago, it still did. There were a lot of North River empty buildings and stuff. But we've got an advantage right now. We've had a lot of outside money come in and people are putting money into these buildings. You know, if you go through some of the list, the fire, hot iron, the garage, the artisans' market, I'll call it the Gardner Building, what they used to call it, the Morris Ground, the Minicotta Block, Marcus and Springs, Medical Block, I L Building, Bering Building and so forth. They've all become a pretty darn nice looking buildings. And I'd like to say that was all due to the Historic Preservation Commission and their hard work, but it was really due to people coming in with a lot of money and being able to put into it and having this sheer desire to do that. And, you know, we'd love to be able to help them if we could, and we have at times wrote letters of support for them, going for grants and things like that. But most of it's been by just sheer outside money, not something Hot Springs per se has done. Now, the balance is loss of recent buildings. And, you know, we lost Welsh Oaks, the Community Action Building. We lost the Sturgley Building. And the Sturgley Building was the one that sat right by the streetlight there. It got tore down and it was approved for tearing down because originally, the state was going to run the highway right through there. They were going to make a long right corner there. Tear the building downstream, don't go there no more. So now we lost another building. That was the second oldest wood structure in the lower part of town. So it was a historic building, but it's history now. Another one is not in the historic district, but I was a little disappointed to see it not investigated further, was the Mammoth Springs Pump House. And that's out towards, out towards the park on the other side of Evans Plunge there. That was the Mammoth Springs Pump House, which fed water uphill towards, there was a tower up on top, and it also fed down to the Mammoth Springs Bath House, which was the city auditorium for years until the city decided to tear it down. So, them are disappointing to see. And I hoping as we move forward that the city will take a little more proactive stance on these buildings and use the tools that they have. I spent quite a little time talking to Deadwood. You know, if you're going to talk something about history, they're probably about as good as anybody. They have the same exact ordinance as you got, but they use them. And you don't see falling down buildings around there, you don't see buildings without roofs in there, you don't see things like that. They've taken the initiative and they use them, and we can too. We got two real problem buildings right now. We've kind of categorized and there's three on the list, and we're starting with the two worst buildings. And, you know, one of them is one that sits beside City Hall. And the other one is the bodega up there with no roof on it. And something was mentioned that in the, when you were doing the ordinance about, well, the one next to City Hall was deemed okay. Well, let's say it's not an imminent danger of falling down, but it is severely deteriorating. Welsh Oaks was there one time too. And so, there's been a letter forwarded and Jeff has indicated that it's moving forward, and I won't comment on that because I don't know if that's commentable right now about dealing with those two buildings in particular. The other one being the bodega, it isn't just the bodega. There's significant damage being done to the building beside it, which is the Minicotta Block. Now, the whole, just about the whole north wall of the Minicotta Block no longer has something protecting it. And so it was never really tuck pointed or meant for an outside wall because it had a building adjoining it. Well, now that building is gone and they're getting water, they were getting water in their basement from it. So they filled in the hole there, but that almost makes the problem worse because now the water will go down there and sit. One of the big problems with sandstone, or just why they don't use it a lot anymore, it looks great, but it's not the greatest building material in the world. It doesn't like water. And in particular, it, the water will get into the seams, the joints between there where you normally tuck point and seal it up. And then the water freezes and contracts and it breaks the sandstone out. Now, if you walk around the building next to City Hall, look at the bottom, look at the lower level of that and see how much deterioration there is in that section of the building. There's severe deterioration, there's blocks missing. And so I'm hoping that the city will follow through with this. Because all the rest of these, we sent countless things forward and nothing ever happened. We protested the Community Action Building going down. And the thing about the Community Action Building, that was a very repairable building. That building should have never came down. It needed a roof. Well, how many buildings need roof? A lot of them. But they got it blazing through, we're going to tear the building down, and it got torn down. And we just don't really want to see that. And we have people that, you know, there's three of us on the Commission that have actually done a lot of Historic Preservation, have built and worked on Historic Preservation projects, have done big buildings. You know, we've got a lot of background on our Historic Commission right now. And I hope as the city moves forward that maybe you would use us and look at some of these things. Because you spent, I don't know, $80,000, $90,000 to tear that down. At that era, if you'd have put a $40,000 roof on it, you'd have a perfectly good building at this point in time. But within the, you have really three things in your ordinance that can deal with this, and this comes from Deadwood, and this is what they use too, is deterioration by neglect, which is no doubt happening on most of those buildings, big time. Vacant property registration requirement. And the third one is International Property Maintenance Codes, Chapter 95, the nuisances. And I believe, you know, I'm not a legal expert by any means, but reading through that, I believe they would probably qualify in that area for all three of them. But the big thing would be that deterioration by neglect. Because I think if you start hitting some people with a $500 per day fine, they're going to wake up pretty quick. They probably need to do something. And maybe they might sell it to somebody that will do something. Because a building next to City Hall is marketable. The overall structure of it is. But if we sit a lot of wait for years and years and, you know, for somebody, you know, I dealt with the Welsh Oaks for 30 some years, trying to get somebody to do something with it. And nothing happened. At that time, it'd have been a simple fix. Well, we look at what happened when we didn't do that. But put the burdens on the owners of the buildings. You know, we got these people from out of town by these buildings and they just leave them sit. In some way, I think you as a council need to look at, how can we alleviate that and get some action done on that? There are a number of buildings in town that I won't argue that need some tuck pointing, but we don't have the authority to go around and tell everybody to tuck point the buildings. Now, you guys go through your nuisance things and stuff, because this is like peel and paint, you're going around and telling people to paint their houses now and fix their roofs and stuff like that. You can use that same thing on these buildings. And we probably could stretch it out and say deterioration by neglect, but I'm really hesitant to do the move forward, and I'm not going to be the one to do it, with a deterioration by neglect on these businesses because they are a taxpayer businesses that are contributing to our town. And most of them don't have the funds to take and all of a sudden pop in $40,000, $50,000 to get your building tuck painted. And, yeah, would we love to see that? Yeah. But last thing I want to do is we're finally getting our buildings occupied, let's don't chase them away. Let's hold on to them for a while. But that's where these grants and things come into play. And we're actually working on another grant, I can't really talk about it at this point, there will be more information coming forward on it. Where we're hoping to get some seed money to be able to work with some of those types of buildings and maybe do some low interest loans to them or some, you know, maybe some grants themselves to it. This particular grant's coming through an entirely different agency, and it don't have the strings of a matching requirement. But it's very preliminary at this point in time, so I won't go any further with that. One of the things that I would like to see as we move forward is a budget for the Historic Commission. I know everybody in money right now is, but that's really stopping us from doing pretty much anything. Now, I'll give you for instance here, some of the materials. If you can find them anymore, they were printed up, most of them were from the 70s. We need some updating. And we need to be able to get more information. Now, I've been trying to get in with your IT person, I developed a template to update our preservation webpage. I look at that as, that's a free slate for the city to use to advertise the history. One of the things that the state preservation people said, and I've heard it from the tourism people too, Hot Springs has the most to offer and they do the least with it. And we really need to work at this history on this town. And the history just ain't, oh, that's a cool old building. We need some of the stories. You know, we were the medical center. We were a big medical center for years. We were a cancer research center. Doc Arden pioneered a lot of, a lot of medical procedures and stuff that are still used. We got Butler. Butler was a paper magnate of the United States. He's the largest paper manufacturer in the United, lived here in Hot Springs for years. Butler Park, F.O. Butler Foundation, things like that. Them are history things. You know, Deadwood capitalizes on a couple of individuals and Wild Bill Hickok and Clamity Jane. And really, Wild Bill Hickok was only there a few months and got shot. He really didn't do nothing while he was there. And Clamity Jane was a colorful character. She actually was in our jail down here one night too. And she was over in the big dig and got a little tipsy, I guess, and they had to lock her up for the night. You know, them are stories that go along with this. And that's what I'm hoping to do if I can get the, get the IT people here to finish up getting a meeting with me. It's been over two months now and really haven't had nothing move forward, so if you've got some connections there, let me know. Okay, just one more thing, and I know this comes quite late in the agenda. There's a South Dakota- There's a, uh, South Dakota History Conference in Pira this weekend. And I, I would like to attend, but I would like to see if the city would pay for it. You know, basically pay for a motel, registration, some mileage to get there, you know, because we're all volunteers. We don't, we don't get anything out of this except for our hearts that are in preservation. And, uh, that's something you can discuss later on, but, uh, I would like you to consider it. And, uh, you know, because we, one of the things about these, uh, these, uh, conferences is there's a lot of positive networking goes on there. You make a lot of connections with, with people. You come up with ideas of other avenues that you might be able to try, um, to get some more funds, get some more things to do it with. I mean, Hot Springs is a beautiful town. And we've got one of the most beautiful, you know, ninety-nine percent of the towns in South Dakota die to have what we got here. And we just need to, to use it as a destination place, as history cells. And one of the big tourism things that the tourists talk, tourism people in Pira talk about, and also they start preservation people, is tourism or, uh, history is a destination anymore. People are going to see the history. And we've got it here, but we got to do more than the soaking hot springs, the pictures of buildings. And that's part of what this updating website's going to hopefully do. Because you go into some of those pictures, there's nineteen seventy cars sitting in front of them. They're not really historic pictures. Somebody just took a bunch of pictures and threw them and there's our, and they still show the building, but it really don't do much for the story. You know, what's, what's the story? You know, what's the story behind the bodega? Bodega had a very colorful history to it. You know, what's the story behind the Minnecotta Block and all the different businesses that are in, the things that grew up through that? And the characters that we had in town. Some colorful, some not so colorful. You know, them are stories that really, I truly believe need to be, uh, put out there. And, uh, but that being said, um, I think it's a point where I'd, I'd really like to see the city give us some sort of a budget. And possibly, and it wouldn't have to be a full time, maybe somebody that's, works for the city to put ten dollars a week or into this or something, um, fill out some of this paperwork and to do some of that work. You know, we're all, like I said, we're all volunteers and we'll do some, but I'm not going to write grants for you. You can pay me to write it maybe, but I've wrote grants, but I'm not going to go through all that headache for having somebody else and say, look what I did, you know, or I don't work that way, so. But anyway, are there any questions on that?
What was the date on your history conference?
It's on, it's the last thing on our agenda.
No. Item J.
Twenty-first and twenty-second.
Okay.
The other question? That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That was very comprehensive and thorough. Thank you for everything you, that was very comprehensive and thorough. Thank you for everything you brought to light and got out there.
No, actually, I'll come talk to you anytime. I've never been known for being too shy, so.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, we'll move on to resolution. First resolution, item A, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash nine, a resolution to amend citywide fee resolution.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash nine, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution to increase airport fuel price per gallon to six dollars and five cents per gallon.
Second.
So you want to increase it to six dollars and five cents per gallon? What is it currently?
Five eighty-five.
Oh, okay.
And are we still, um, compatible with surrounding airports?
We will not be the lowest in the area, but we will certainly be competitive. I think we'll be in the lowest, will be lower than, uh, the mid-range. But wholesale prices are now above five dollars a gallon. And they continue to rise in the summer. Our inventory is down to three thousand gallons. So we will purchase again at around two thousand gallons so we can take a full load. So we want to increase our price so we can be prepared to, uh,
Meet it.
Buy that, afford that full load.
I heard, um, someone who's in the know said that the prices are going to go up for about the next month and then they should, should start dropping again. It was in like the five o'clock news yesterday. So hopefully that will happen.
I make no predictions.
Right.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Uh, on to new business. New business, item A, authorize the finance office to establish sick and vacation accruals.
I make a motion to authorize the finance office to establish sick and vacation accruals for the full, full-time benefited employees at the Southern Hills Golf Course.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, authorize the finance office to credit the following leave balances retroactively.
I make a motion to authorize the finance office to credit the following leave balances retroactively for Jason Happ, one hundred hours of vacation and six hundred and seventy-two hours of sick leave. Josh Prem, is that how you pronounce that?
Prem.
Prem. Sixty hours of vacation and three hundred and forty-two hours of sick leave.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, renew the city school facility use agreements.
I make a motion to re, to renew option year three, the city school facility use agreement effective May first, twenty twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item D, renewal of spectrum lease for census wireless utility.
Make a motion, uh, to renew, uh, for the renewal of the spectrum lease for census wireless utility meter reading system.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E, plat of Claussen Track and Hanson Track to Block Eight.
I make a motion to approve the plat of Claussen Track and Hanson Track of Block Eight, Eaton Addition to the Town, now City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly the east fifty feet of lots one through five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F, special sale alcoholic beverage license application.
I'll make a motion to approve the special sales alcoholic beverage license application from CAS Inc., doing business as Winner Circle for the Mammocyte fundraiser of City Murals event to be held on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Mueller Civic Center.
Second.
I didn't catch.
Give it to Melanie.
Okay.
Melissa.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item G, automatic budget supplement.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, eighty-five cents to water fund improvements other than building six oh-two dash four three three five zero dash four three three zero zero and three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars to the wastewater fund improvement other than building six oh-four dash four three two five zero dash four three three zero zero for the sewer and water main, uh, replacement project. Grant reimbursement received from CDBG grant number nineteen nineteen dash one oh seven dash zero eight.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item H, acknowledge notification of raffle.
I make a motion to acknowledge notification of raffle from the Department of Public Safety Drivers Licensing Department to raise funds for the Front Port Coalition as part of their annual fundraiser. Drawing will be held Friday, June second, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item I, acknowledge notification of raffle from the Trampus Heskovich Memorial Foundation.
I make a motion to acknowledge notification of raffle from the Trampus Heskovich Memorial Foundation. Proceeds from the raffle will be donated to local first responders. Drawing will be held Saturday, June third, two thousand twenty-three at the American Legion Post Club, post seven one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J, travel, uh, request from Historic Preservation Chair Steve Voinia.
I make a motion to approve a travel request from Historic Preservation Chair Steve Voinia to attend South Dakota History Conference in Pira, South Dakota on four twenty-one and four twenty-two, estimated expenses at six hundred dollars.
Second. Discussion. What fund will this come out of?
We were anticipating mayor and council travel and conference at this time, unless you have a different suggestion.
Okay.
So are we going to open this up for everybody in every committee now? Like the head of golf course committee, if he wants to go with Jason in Florida, are we going to open up stuff like that?
It's a different topic.
I, I would say no, Craig. I think Steve made a good case of the importance of the Historic Preservation Commission. They are required by South Dakota codified law. He had pointed out that, um, there hasn't been a lot of support of the organization in the past. I think as, as chair of the, of the organization, it's important for them to, um, help us move forward on, on managing our buildings.
Has this ever been done before?
Um, I don't know. It hasn't been done since two thousand sixteen, when I was first on council.
I have no problem with them going, but I don't think the taxpayer should pay for it. I mean.
I think the city needs to support the historic preservation of this town, and this is where it starts.
I agree with that statement, but we got to be careful of who we, we can't be biased in any way. We've got to think of the taxpayers first.
Well, Jason Happy gets to go places. He's at the golf course.
Well, he's an employee, isn't he?
He's an employee.
Uh, two of the buildings that, that Steve talked about when you say that the taxpayers shouldn't pay for this, rounding off figures, because I don't know the exact one, the taxpayers paid eighty thousand dollars to have one building torn down. Uh, and what did we pay for the other one? Hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars?
Yep.
Uh, because we didn't manage them well. So we can invest six hundred dollars to help, uh, help us get this right going forward or find ourselves in a situation where we're having to deal with a lot more than six hundred dollars to figure out what we're going to do with the building.
Well, I think, I think it's well worthwhile that we allow him to go for the city. Um, and as a taxpayer, I'd like to, uh, just stand up and say, yeah, I want to see him go because I want the support, um, for our city and our buildings, uh, to see what we can do to, to, uh, better our historical preservation. And then I think that we also need to look at, any other application that would come through would be on a case by case basis. Uh, should we want to or not want to allow them to go to any, uh, any training? But for this one, I say yes.
And I just, I just, I'd asked Misty where the money would come from. She said, uh, this particular one would come from mayor and council. Looking at the expenditure report through March, mayor and council had spent twenty-two point zero six percent of the budgeted funds, and that's through twenty-five percent of the year. So it appears that there is money to do this. We have, we were schooled, I think, very well tonight. We, we have a history of not taking care of our buildings. We've got a new ordinance. We've got a, a committee, a commission that is trying to get energized and, and do the right thing and bring us back information so that we can support them. So I personally would support this. I think it's the right thing to do. You can't, you can't go forward without current information and networking and, uh, information from others is a good way to do that.
All true. But he sat right there telling us that we have ordinances to stop all this thing and we don't abide by them, so it's on fault.
I think it would be an outstanding conference. I don't see a lot of what he's wanting to do in the schedule. And for a two-day conference, six hundred dollars is a little excessive.
I believe the conference registration fee, he's a member personally, so he gets the member rate, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The additional cost, excuse me, our mileage to Pira and back and two nights of a hotel
Any other questions or comments?
So if we say yes to this, does that mean he's going to be our representative towards any future?
Well, he is the chair, the chairman of the Historic Commission.
I thought he wanted to step down.
He just got reelected, so.
How many years is that?
I thought you said you were going to step down too, and you're up for reelection.
I didn't say that.
I heard you.
I said I might.
But he is our chairman. He's just been reelected, so he will be, he is our representative.
Okay, so I'll repeat my question. How, how many years does he get to stay in office? Is it two?
It's two, and he's been there for two. And the previous one was in there for many, many years. So, and he has been a sandstone owner as well.
Yes, he has. And he knows the headaches and...
My only concern is are we going to be setting a precedent?
I think everything should be case by case.
Yeah, just because we do something once doesn't tie us to doing it time and time again. If it tastes sweet, we'll do it again. If it's sour, it won't happen again.
Any other questions or comments?
How many of these conferences do we have a year? Do we know?
We haven't paid for...
No, I mean, how many do they have for the year?
I don't know.
This one is an annual conference that says it on there.
It's an annual?
Right. There might be other historic preservation type conferences that I'm not aware of, but...
Okay. All right. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No. All right. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Tippett, call the roll, please.
Larry Pratt.
I'm kicking my feet, but yes.
Melissa Niles.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
David Burris.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes. Uh, our last new business, item K, a travel training request from the library director.
I make a motion for travel training requests from the library director, Meredith Torones, and library clerks Heather Lee and Christine Pogon to attend the Black Hills Mini Library Conference, Rapid City, South Dakota, on four twenty-four twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our committee reports, administrative and finance. Brings us to our committee reports, administrative and finance. JR.
Our next administrative and finance meeting will be May 1st, 1 o'clock, at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill.
Next airport advisory is Thursday, May 4th, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Craig.
Next month.
But it's not in May, May 11th?
Oh, is it in May?
I think so.
Isn't that next month?
That is next month, your first.
May 11th.
7 p.m.
Tim Belts won't be on that committee.
When and where?
Here.
7 p.m.
7 at night. Deborah says 10.
That's what Misty said.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah.
The commission met April 5th, 5 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Members present were Steve Weenya, Joe Muller, Pat Like, and Brian Crawford. City representatives were Scott Sogi and myself. Guest presence were Christine Heidebrink and Gerald Culligan. Gerald talked about the need to deal with the drainage problems associated with the buildings along North River Street. And he was informed that the road people, construction people, did do a big survey about drainage behind all those buildings along North River Street a year ago, or two years ago now, I think, before the project ever started. Discussion from the... That was from the public. New business, new signage for Maria March's 741 Jennings Street that we approved her liquor license tonight. Certificate of approval for two signs on the north and the west sides of the building that says "The Kitchen," and it was approved. Steve announced and provided contact information for the 2023 South Dakota Historic Society Conference this weekend, and thank you for approving that. An information packet from the VA Black Hills Healthcare System, Hot Springs Campus was received. They will be renovating Building 8. Steve sent an email to Mark Tupper expressing support for the project from the Hot Springs Historic Commission. The possibility of future grants was discussed with ideas of how grants could be used. Under old business, 243 North River Street, the Transfer Feed and Fuel Building and the 611 North River Bodega Building letters are at the attorney and should be sent out this week or sometime soon to the owners. HPC website update, waiting on the city IT personnel to schedule a meeting. SOS update, Deborah relayed that they have the QR codes on order and are working on the links to their website. And the next meeting will be May 3rd at 5 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Can I just clarify? Website updates can be done by Zoe with the chamber or Ariel at City Hall, updates our website. Our IT does not update our website.
Okay.
And either one of those two.
That's what he meant. Okay. I'll get with them.
Okay.
Thank you. Evans Pudge Advisory, Linda.
The Evans Pudge Advisory Committee met on April 13th, 2023 at noon. Present were myself, Chris Hansen, Akoya Zimiga, Dennis Fisher, Tom Nas, Allison Ritter-Bush, Barry McNair, Melissa Niles, and Excuse was Mara Smith. We welcome Melissa to our group. Discussed update on the new committee member recommendations. One individual denied due to a change in employment, and we'll follow up with a second person. There were no new incidents to report. We discussed the closure review, and the annual cleaning was uneventful, and we got many tasks completed and refreshed painting and replaced a showerhead. And they're looking at installing a new sign at the Minnetoka Junction area, and the skin of that sign to be applied is 14 feet by 45 feet. And yet to be done is to install the roll-up door on the back corner of the building and refresh the front of the building. Summer planning, we still need to hire more lifeguards and front desk personnel. Per Allison, she is looking into holding a USA swim camp this summer consisting of two, two-week sessions. And so, she needs to figure out the fees and the insurance. And these will be held in the outdoor pool area. There will be no swim lessons offered this year without a recreation director. Next meeting will be held May 11th, 2023, at noon at the Evans Pudge Mineral Springs.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you.
I'm sorry. The swim... Say that again, on the swimming lessons?
Okay, there will be no swimming lessons. I think they were... Went for several weeks at a time without the recreation director to get it up and going. But Allison was willing to step up and do two, two-week summer camps, summer swim camps for older students, not the little ones.
Okay. Not like the mama and me swimming lessons? Okay.
No.
Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation, Larry.
Next meeting will be May 3rd at 2 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah.
It's this Wednesday, April 19th, at 7 p.m., City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR.
Public Safety met on Thursday, April 6th, 2023, at 2 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. Called order and roll call. Members present were Alderman Bill Lukens, Alderman JR Huddleston, Alderwoman Deborah Johnston, Mayor Bob Nelson, Chief Ross Norton, Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard, Renee Staley, the Compliance Manager, Fall River Hospital, Molly Anderson, Quality Assurance at Fall River Hospital, and Melissa Fleming from the Fall River County Sheriff's Office. The agenda was adopted as published. Members from the Fall River... Who's that? Fall River Hospital were present to learn about our committee update from the police department. Both officers at the academy are doing well and have passed their first sectional test. The 2016 Charger is completed and is ready for... To break in some miles. And will be... This will be accomplished by Officer Hughes as she travels to and from the academy. Sun Tech has ordered the in-car computers. Typical installation time is two to three days once the equipment arrives. In March, the PD responded to 324 calls, 21 of which were considered high-risk calls. Old business, no old business. New business, Trenton Halfley with the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks was present to discuss the next steps in authorizing and planning a deer harvest based on the latest deer population survey. Items from the members... Frank Maynard provided an update on the recent tornado drill based on the number of areas of town that could not hear the siren. His office will be requesting a grant for two additional sirens, one at the state home and one near the city library. The purchase and installation would be accomplished by the county and only need city concurrence. The siren would be used for both severe and fire notifications. During the recent snowstorm, dispatch received multiple calls about snow removal because of the standard phone message from City Hall... From the City Hall number referred... Referring people to call the dispatch when the city offices are closed. This resulted in a high volume of non-emergent traffic at the dispatch center. Mayor Nelson took an action item to review the current process. Learning moment. As a learning moment, the committee reviewed an analysis of the body cam video of the Nashville Covenant School shooting. If you get a chance, you should review that. It's amazing what those guys did. We adjourned at 4:30. The next meeting is Thursday, May 4th, at 2 p.m. at the Mueller Center Conference Room. Mannequin.
Any questions for JR?
Are... Is there going to be a deer harvest? We get questions often at City Hall about the deer population.
I still think, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I still think there's a possibility. There are some options that the state was looking at for us to be able to have a harvest. But it's just... It has to be pre-staged, preset, in specific locations. This way, we're not, for instance, having somebody in front of my house shooting one of the 20,000 deer that come through every day and have it traverse to another property, dragging blood behind it, falling in their property, dying and bleeding in their property, things like that. We want it so that it's safe for everybody, safe for the public, and as humanly possible, in staged areas. So, is the possibility of that to happen?
Yeah.
The count did justify a harvest.
Trenton has sent me a copy of the resolution that Rapid City passes. It's... He is working on his end to get approval for us to... If we can do it, it'll likely be done during the arch, normal arch season. And we would specify the number of tags that could be taken in a specified area per week over the course of the season. And it would be specified areas of town that could... Where they could be safely taken. And so, there's a lot of pre-work and a lot of planning to be done once we get the go-ahead from the state that we could have a sea... An archery season within the city limits.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this... They would be selling available licenses for anybody to purchase, as long as it was archery? Or would it be a professional from Game Fish and Parks doing that?
No, it would be... It would be qualified archers within the city limits. It wouldn't just be... If you can show proficiency, then you could... You could do... You could buy the tag, and then you would also keep the meat.
But they would have to go through a proficiency test to assure that they can hit a target at a certain distance or point.
Not take out your picture window.
Or whatever. And it would be during archery season, archery only. No firearms would be used.
Okay.
But it's a possibility. That's all I can say. I'm not happy because it isn't the answer I wanted from the state. But there is a possibility we can still, during archery season, possibly have a designated hunter.
They're actively working to get us permission, and we're actively working the plans and procedures.
And a resolution would come before this council?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the count, the official count? Or was one done?
I think it was 183. I don't...
I thought you said 23.
It might be more than that. Just a minute.
We've done this in the past, and Billy was the one that shot them all.
Yeah.
There's a city ordinance that no bacon shoot bow and arrows or any... Anything in the city of Hot Springs.
Right, and that's...
So, we're going to have to say, "Oh, well, the ordinance is going to have to sit down for a while."
Yeah, that's part of the... Yeah, we'll have to exempt our ordinance that prohibits...
So, why aren't we doing it like the past and just have... Because they got 22. You can't hear that thing go off.
The state won't allow... Typically, won't allow harvesting with a firearm in a city limit.
They must have changed because we've done it before.
Yes, they have.
I think, if I'm not wrong, I'm going to be close, but on the College Hill portion of the city, there was a count of 130. And then in lower town, throughout lower town, was like 57. So, I think it's about 187, if I'm right.
I counted it over 50 on 4th Street.
I counted 20 the other day in my yard. But anyway, that's...
Yeah, thank you.
So, right around the 200.
Just under 200, yes.
And just the... What Trenton shared with us is the struggle is where Hot Springs, every resident you talk to, we are being overrun with mule deer. And throughout the state, we have a mule deer shortage. And yes...
They should try feeding them.
Everybody in town will give you the look that Misty just gave me. But every place in the state, there's a mule deer shortage, except in Hot Springs.
If these were all whitetail deer, there wouldn't be an issue. But they're mule deer, and we're going to have a fight on it.
And we've got about five whitetails in town, and...
So, for the general public, stop feeding the deer.
And the turkey.
They have to learn how to forage for themselves without us helping them. And they're not afraid of anybody. So, do you need to come out, scare them off your property? Get them used to being afraid of human interaction and not looking for food in your yard with you throwing a bunch of corn or whatever you've got out there so they can have it? So, please, help us out.
That's the other thing that Mr. Halfley said is people are so careful and gentle around the deer that this is a very comfortable place. We don't make noise around them. We, you know, we almost treat them like delicate pets, and so, they have no reason to not come into our town.
My dog will bark at them, and they'll walk towards my dog.
We don't treat them that way in my yard. Does that mean nobody plants flowers in Hot Springs for a year or two? Because that's what most of the deer eat.
I have no problem running mine off.
So, anyway, it's a strange situation.
Well, you go back the old ways and just shoot it.
No, we have an ordinance that...
Any other questions for Bill or JR?
No. Oh. That wasn't for my... For me to answer.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
Craig?
Present was Mayor Nelson, Tracy Bastian, myself, Melissa Miles. Deborah Johnson showed up for the last two questions on there. But she was there. There's not a lot here because it's... Nothing's new. It's all old, but there's some information about the flood wall railing. We're looking at different options because the Historical Committee wants us to put a nice fence up. And I understand that. I think it would look nice. What we planned on was a... Was a chain link, but the... The what? The Historical Society... Tracy got some samples of different kinds of fences that would look nice. It's just being able to put them on the wall properly or...
Instead of the railing? Instead of the original?
Possible to reuse some of the railing that will be surplus when the suspended sidewalk goes on North River Street?
No. It has to be... Now, it has to be toward kids can't stick their heads through it and stuff like that if you put it up new. Excuse me. The replacement of sewer line on Baltimore Avenue, the city's going to try to do it in May. We talked last time about a check valve being put in so it don't run back into basements of those houses. The check valve is in, but they got too much work at the sewer department[1773.68] The check valve is in, but they got too much work at the sewer department to put it in right away, so they're gonna put it in as soon as they can. The sewer line, I'm sorry, apologize for irrigation line at the depot in North River and Centennial Park. Tracy and the Parks Department's gonna try to do the depot. Tracy and Bart's gonna see what it costs for the one at Centennial Park. They're trying to put in a three-inch line and with sprinkler heads, they'll, they'll water the lawn and down by the river. The one at Lynch Cote Mart probably won't get in the budget for a couple of years because where they're gonna do that probably won't get done till next, into next fall sometime down by Lynch Cote Mart.
Yep.
The mobile food truck locations, we talked and talked about that but never really came up with anything. I have down here, we think, to not change ordinance on it, so it's one of those things, we don't think that we should build the, tell the food trucks where they can and can't park on private property. That's what Public Works came up with. I think once the construction gets at the other end of town, most of those food trucks might move down that way. I could be wrong, but that's kind of what we came up with, guys. That's all I, that's all I have.
Was that recommendation given already, or?
I just gave it.
I didn't know if you guys had talked.
Our next meeting, April twenty-fifth, at one o'clock, at the Mueller Civic Center. I'll be there.
Any questions, any questions for Craig or Dave? Craig was talking about the mobile food vendor, whether council has an appetite for changing the ordinance as requested by the public. And in your info side of the packet, was an email from, or is an email from Garland talking about that subject, and then an email from the finance officer and another one from Councilman Lukens addressing some of the concerns. And as Craig said, it comes down to telling other private property owners what they can and can't do with their businesses or their property in an attempt to address the situation that was shared with the council. And the feeling, the recommendation from the Public Works is to not make any change to the ordinance unless council feels strongly that there needs to be some kind of change. And we would need to hear from you tonight, whether that's the direction you want to go or if you're satisfied with leaving the ordinance the way that it is.
We did talk about, you know, putting everything down our food parks like we, you know, we made it that way. But if we did that, then special events like, you know, the park over there, they couldn't have food vendors there. They'd have to walk down to the, you know, if we said, no, it can't, you have to be in our vendor park, you know, they couldn't have them down at Centennial Park in the summertime.
One of the suggestions was to only allow mobile food vendors in our city parks. That would be Butler Park, Centennial Park. And when it comes to Butler Park, nobody's gonna know they're up there. Our visitors, as they're coming through town, our tourists, they're not gonna know that they're up there. So the concern is that we would affect more businesses by restricting where the mobile food trucks can go than are currently being affected by where they're allowed. Recommendation from Public Works is to not change the ordinance.
I just want to make sure that they're all paying the fees that they're supposed to be paying.
We have seven licensed mobile food vendors for twenty-twenty-three right now.
Okay.
They paid two-hundred-and-fifty dollars the initial, then a hundred dollars a year after that.
For renewal.
Right. And like we talked about, the only other thing we could do is make them pay more every year, you know, than a hundred dollars.
Make the food park more affordable than scattered elsewhere.
The only problem with food parks is they get electricity and water and everything, so we have to, we have to charge them what we're charging.
But what I'm saying is if they aren't in the, if they aren't in the food park and they're in these people's parking lots, they should maybe have to pay a higher fee if they're not using the food park.
There's only four spots in the food park.
Yeah.
Bill, you'd made mention on Dillon's rules. Can you clarify what that is more?
Well, I'm going by what, what Misty mentioned in her finance officer report that, if I understand, Dillon's rule is that cities can only regulate what the state legislature through law has given us the power to regulate. Did I oversimplify that?
It's correct, and we have written ordinances to regulate mobile food vendors, and we've had it in place since twenty-nineteen.
And what I, what I saw in, in, you know, the lawyers challenging, getting ready to challenge my legal opinion with the big guns. Is we can, what I saw is that we can license people, we can, we can zone activities, and that's kind of what I see the limit of our authority. Get me, Garland, get me.
I was just gonna make a comment, like, you know, I live in Custer. So Custer for years has had a, their ordinances restricted, basically said you had to own the lot, you had to own the real, the property to be able to put a food truck on it. So it was a, 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 almost outright ban, like you couldn't lease a spot or anything. But it's kind of funny, they just repealed that, I think, their last meeting. You can have food trucks on private property now in Custer. But for years, it's, it's been, if you didn't own the land, you shouldn't have a food truck on it.
I believe they did that because they had such public input from business owners that were against it. Our public input, when we got ours in place, was the opposite. If you were around in twenty-nineteen when we created the mobile food vendor ordinance, there was quite a bit of public comment in support of those businesses in our community.
I would agree with that. I'd say all the brick and mortar restaurants were really, really against, in Custer, against food truck vendors. Also talking about special events, the Custer ordinance did allow for, you know, Fourth of July, Gold Discovery Days and stuff like that as far as exceptions. I think it had, I think they had a time limit. Like I think, you know, the fish truck that runs around here, like they can set up for like one day, but then they can't come back for like two weeks or something. But now it's, it's free range in Custer, so.
I think one of the big things that we need to be careful of is if we do something like this, well, I mean, we got a lot of taxpayers are gonna be real upset with us real quick. I mean.
And when you say do something like this, change the ordinance to restrict?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The original idea for the food vendor area was.
Speaking to your mic.
The original intent was to give, to take a piece of property that the city really wasn't doing anything with, we didn't have any plans to do anything with it at the time, and to give an area for possible future business owners here in town, brick and mortar. The restaurant business I know well. It's a big investment, and we're a small town, you don't have a whole lot of labor pull to pull out of. So it really enhanced us as far as places to eat, opened up, you know, some possibilities of if a vendor did well and wanted to open a business here in town, he'd already have his business started, basically. But getting into, to competing with private property owners and stuff like that, that's not where I originally intended to go with this. That wasn't, I don't think anybody's idea. And if we restrict where you're gonna park, that means we're telling our, our property owners that we have the final say. And I, you won't catch me doing that. I won't support that. Sure, there's gonna be problems once in a while, there's gonna be, things come along, we're just gonna have to deal with it as it comes. And just go that route instead of trying to take away rights from our, from our property owners. That's the way I view it.
Any other comments?
I agree with that.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Jeff isn't with us tonight, so we won't have a report from the Southern Hills Golf Course or City Administrator. Brings us to Finance Officer, Misty.
I have very little to report since we had auditors in-house for the field work for the last week. That is wrapped up. They told me it'd take about two weeks, and it took two and a half days in person. Still working on getting some final information for them, but it's kept us real busy, so I don't have much to report. Compliance reporting is still in progress. I'll be out of the office Friday this week, the twenty-first, and Monday, the twenty-fourth. And we did receive our S D M L workers' comp payroll audit. We had two million, four hundred, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars paid in payroll in twenty-twenty-two. One hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars of that was overtime or eight percent. Two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars were unworked hours paid, so sick, vacation, holiday, and admin leave were eleven percent of our total. That payroll audit will result in a little over five thousand refunded back to the city of workers' comp that we paid for that was calculated as unworked hours or overtime or benefit hours. So we'll distribute that refund based on the percentages of what was paid by department and fund. That's all I have.
Any questions for Misty?
Well, as she said, last week was, was busy for finance and the other folks putting together information. It was interesting to watch the individuals over down here. There were three of them with six laptops. It looked like they were trying to launch a rocket or something from in there, but thank you. I'd asked, you know, how you felt that it went, and overall, you're very satisfied with the audit.
So far, I haven't seen the written report, so if there's any surprise, but I was able to answer all their questions.
And there was one particular question that they were fuzzy on, my words, not anybody else's, that Misty gave them her explanation of the question they had, and they took her explanation over what they understood, the way that was supposed to be, so thank you again.
Way to go, Misty.
Given that we have a, an executive session in front of us, it's late already, and this may be a longish executive session, I won't bore you with anything from me, so if I could get a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law, one dash twenty-five dash two, three, legal.
Second.
Discussion. There may be an action taken when we come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and there'll be a brief pause before we.
Thank you.
Get together?
Thank you.
Carl, have you got us?
All right, so we're back at ten oh nine. We have a motion that we need to make. JR, I believe you have that?
I'd like to propose a motion for the, to authorize the mayor to sign an expedition, expedited civil action certification related to the complaint against Holt Homes LLC.
Discussion. Did you get it, Misty?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Say it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.